...supervisors and a good friend of Knockin' Drop Iowa.
Thank you for being here. Whereas September 15th through October 15th is recognized as National Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month, which is a time to honor the invaluable ways Latinos contribute to our nation's economy and growth, celebrate their diverse cultures, and to work towards a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous society for all. And whereas Latinos are individuals living in the United States whose ancestors originate from the Caribbean Islands, Central America, Mexico, and South America, and many traces aruses to the cultures of indigenous peoples of Americas, including the Irocs, and Aztecs, the Incas, the Maya, and the Tianos. The European colonization, or the Africans who were brought as slaves to the New World. And whereas Latinos speak multiple languages such as Creole, English, French, indigenous languages and dialects, Portuguese and Spanish. And the term Hispanic refers to Latinos in the United States whose ancestors originate from countries where Spanish is the primary language. And whereas we honor the enriching history and the invaluable contributions the Latino Iowans have made over the years to the nation, state, and to our great city. And whereas 5,000 years of rich culture and continuous settling of Latinos roots now represent a significant and fast-growing demographic in the city of Des Moines, being 14.3% of the population with a promise of continuing to be the fastest and biggest growing ethnic group. Now therefore, I Connie Boson, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2024, as Latino Heritage Month. And I encourage all residents to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, compassionate, and equitable for all. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Des Moines, Iowa, to be affixed this 16th day of September, 2024. So, thank you, and I think you have a big festival this weekend, if you want to talk about that a little bit.
Yes, the Latino Heritage Month starts, as she said, the 15th through the 15th of October, and the big festival will be this Saturday and Sunday. We encourage everyone to participate and attend. It's beautiful. It's got all kinds of different countries and cultures and colors, and just embrace that good culture and the food and the cuisine and enjoy it.
Of course. It would be me to take it with you. So, I think... Our next proclamation, and Chief Tekip is going to come, except on behalf of our Labor Union Appreciation Month. So whereas hard-working people across the state of Iowa prove that our community is filled with the most creative, dynamic, and talented workers in the world, and whereas since it began, organized labor has raised living standards and built our middle class. It is the reason we have child labor laws, 40-hour work weeks, weekends, overtime, vacations, and a minimum wage, sick leave, parental leave, OSHA, employment, non-discrimination, pensions, Social Security, health insurance, and so much more. And whereas the opportunities Americans value today exist because their parents and grandparents fought for these basic rights and values. Principles upheld by the honorable labors of generations past, and their labor unions continue to fuel the growth of our economy and a strong middle class. And whereas there is a vigorous fight to protect those rights and values, and during this Labor Union Appreciation Month, we recognize that public and private employees, such as professionals, educators, social workers, postal workers, clerks, public safety personnel, public work personnel, electrical workers, plumbers, auto workers, carpenters, and others, that are the foundation of what makes the American dream a reality. Now therefore, I Connie Boson, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2024, as Labor Union Appreciation Month. And I call upon all residents to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that acknowledge the tremendous contributions of working Americans and their families. So, thank you. We will reconvene at 5 o'clock for our regular meeting. ...meeting of September... It's on.
Oh.
I just did it.
Okay.
Oh, you did? Sorry. Okay, we'll start that again. We're going to call to order the Des Moines City Council meeting for September 16, 2024. Please take the roll.
Boson.
Here.
Simonsen.
Boss.
Here.
Coleman.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And before we get into the agenda, I just want to read a statement based on what's happened this weekend. This weekend, our city was ravaged by multiple instances of gun violence, leaving four individuals deceased and three individuals injured, including two Des Moines police officers. Words cannot express the pain that families are feeling tonight. There are relatives and friends who will never be able to laugh or hold their loved ones again. Other families, like those of our police officers, are anxiously waiting in hospital rooms to hear if their family members will heal from their wounds. When will we finally say enough is enough? We understand that various factors contribute to the pervasiveness of gun violence throughout our country. First and foremost is the value we place on human life. There is no way to take back violence that could end someone's life. As a community, we need to learn how to resolve conflicts and disagreements without doing irreversible damage with deadly weapons. Please, let's all do our part to reduce the prevalence of gun violence in the city of Des Moines, support each other, be kind to each other, and be responsible gun owners. I just wanted to make that comment after what has happened this week. And with that, I also have been aware that there is someone in our audience that has sensory issues, so I would please ask the audience to refrain from clapping, making loud noises, and clicking, because it is... They have issues with that, and it really is not good for them. So, the next thing is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. And on the consent agenda, 4E, that is items 3 through 68, 4E, 4T is withdrawn, inspections are incomplete. 63A is withdrawn at the request of Neighborhood Services Department.
Move approval.
The regular items are 69 through 80, 79 was withdrawn by the city manager. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Next item is a proven and consent item. Those are items 3 through 68. These are routine items and will be acted by one rule call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules. Council requests an item to be removed or to be considered separately. Item 5, Boss votes no. Item 50, Coleman would like to speak, and 51, Mandelbaum abstains. Is there a motion to...
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item is the hearings, 71, on vacation of surface and subsurface rights within portions of Ingersoll Avenue, right-of-way adjoining 2701 Ingersoll Avenue, and conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment, and a permanent easement for subsurface building encroachment on city-owned property to Star Lofts condos for $5,400. A is first consideration of the ordinance above. B is final consideration of the ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant, and requires six votes. Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, 10 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this?
Seeing none, Madam Mayor, I move item 71, 71A, and 71B.
Take it.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 72, on conveyance of excess city property at 1400 E17 Court to Polk County for $1. Again, Jermaine comments, two minutes per person to speak. Anyone wishing to speak to that issue? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move item 72.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Coleman. Coleman.
Oh, sorry.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is 73, on request from Delaney Enterprises LLC, Connor Delaney, officer, to rezone 515 Euclid Avenue from MX1 Mixed-Use District to MX2 Mixed-Use District to allow an existing building to be used for an eating and drinking places bar. Use so long as the zoning board of adjustment grants a conditional use for such use. A is consideration of the ordinance above. B is final consideration of the ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant, requires six votes. First is the parties of interest. Applicant for rezoning and those within 250 feet of the property to be zoned will be given up to five minutes to speak. Anyone here? Second would be Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person, up to 20 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Seeing none, I move item 73A and B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Number 74, on a request from JSG Properties LLC, Gary Jones, officer, to amend the plan DSM, creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use, classification of the property from business park to industrial, and to rezone 3001 McKinley Avenue from EX Mixed-Use District to limited I1 Industrial District to allow the expansion of the existing industrial and warehousing use with zoning regulations. Continued from August 19, 2024 meeting, A is the first consideration of ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of ordinance above waiver requested by the applicant, requires six votes. Again, first is the parties of interest, applicant for rezoning, and those within 250 feet of the property. Next would be any Jermaine comments, up to two minutes each. If you have a Jermaine comment, would like to come up?
I'm representing the applicant.
Yeah, so come forward and state your name and address.
Kevin Tyson. Good evening to everybody.
And if you... Your address, whether you're Des Moines or Ward?
Des Moines.
Okay.
Yes. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. I've been through several phases of this, and there was a couple of items that were of concern. In this time prior to today, we've addressed those issues and taken the necessary states that... steps that were brought to our attention to get this through with the committee and the people that had concerns.
So, just a couple of questions for us. I think I had a few of those questions. So, how many dumpsters are you going to have outside?
Three.
And will they all be covered?
Yes, sir.
And how often will you be bringing the glass out there? Like, anytime during the day?
No, between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, not any excess of three times a day.
Not any... Okay. And do you have some type of site plan that we could see where it shows where exactly that the dumpster enclosure is going to be compared to the addition of the building?
I believe that all that paperwork's been submitted.
Okay.
I do not personally have it with me today.
And then what about... What about... Can we talk a little bit about tree plantings? And I know that...
Yes. The major concern was what I reference as the northeast corner of the lot, and we would make adjustments there to what is already necessary and improve upon that, putting in some larger trees to start off with, and maybe some different types of trees to increase the amount of coverage.
So, I guess what I hear from the neighbors is they want some evergreens put in there. So, we have, you know, they have some covers.
I don't have an objection. Right. There's no objection to that.
Okay. Yeah, that's good.
Okay, is...
Kevin, I thought two of the dumpsters were going to be covered and the one with glass not. Has that changed?
We can change it if that's the desire, but...
Always.
Yes. We're trying to be flexible and understand what the request is and meet it the best we possibly can. If that becomes a necessity for the recycle bin to be recovered, we would also look into that as well.
Okay.
Previous conversations had excluded the recycle bin.
Okay.
Thanks.
Are all three going to be covered? The ones with the glass?
Prior to today, the agreement was on two. We can go three if we have to.
Okay.
I think the neighbors would feel comfortable if they were all covered, just because of the amount...
I can respect that. That's why we're trying to be flexible with it. It's not a huge investment for the return. I think that it's more equitable and fair to make this request, and we'd be willing to accommodate it.
And all of those will be in the dumpster enclosure?
Yes, absolutely. Whatever the zoning committee commands for enclosure and gated and privacy and things like that, that'll be done as well. The covering will be done in addition to.
Okay.
Councilman Mandelbaum, do you have any more comments?
No, I appreciate... I mean, I had the opportunity to meet with Kevin, as well as the opportunity to meet with a number of neighbors. I think this, particularly if we get all three covered, addresses the concerns that the neighbors had. The changes, just to be clear for the record, we've added language to make sure that the enclosure for the dumpster is a couple feet taller than the dumpsters, that there are the lids, and then there's going to need to be work on the site plan is...
To where will be located?
On the trees.
Trees, okay.
It's the trees and the fencing to make sure. And I think we're being clear at this table for staff as they work through the site plan process, that we want mature trees that will provide the cover. So, that includes evergreens and trees that are not saplings that are, you know, that we start along the path of significant growth so that there's not, hopefully not as many years to wait before the neighbors realize the benefits of that coverage.
Yeah. And then just one quick question. Will you be having any night shifts? Well, anything after 5:00? Because I know in the past you have had some.
Currently, there are no plans to have a night shift. That is part of the reasoning for trying to get the addition on so we can avoid having a night shift. We need to produce more product. So, in an effort to alleviate having a night shift, we want to do the expansion so we can expand the headcount during normal residence hours.
But you would... I mean, through this whole rezoning, you would be allowed to have a night shift?
We currently do not and don't intend to, but I assume we could if we elected to. But that's not our... That's not the direction we want to go.
One stipulation, I would say if you do have a night shift, that you don't throw away the...
Oh, absolutely not. There is no trash.
Eight to five.
Exactly. That is the practice we exercise currently and will continue.
Yeah, but I think in the past, you didn't exercise that when you had a night shift.
That's been a number of years ago, but you are correct.
Okay.
Members of the public. Members of the public.
Speak. Was there anybody else from the public I thought we'd given? If not, I'll entertain a motion. And thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm happy to move 74, 74A. And can we just make the modification that all three dumpsters be covered? I think in 74A, it's just two, or would that require...
Well, you actually... If you want to make it a condition, you have to continue the hearing again. The statute is clear that the signed conditions have to be done prior to the conclusion of the hearing. So, if you want to add that as a condition, we'll need to continue the hearing and then add that in writing as...
I think everybody in the neighborhood would feel a lot more comfortable if they were all three covered. I don't know if that messes up your construction plans, if we went two more weeks and had the same hearing, and you probably don't even need to come, because I think we're all in agreement, as long as you're in agreement with the terms that we talked about.
It will cause some delay, but we're willing to work around that in order to rectify this situation.
Okay. I mean, I... It would get me to vote at the point of time. I probably won't vote now if they don't... We don't continue.
You could... 74A.
No, no.
You can't do any of it because you're changing the condition.
Have to continue the hearing.
It's not... I mean, we have another council meeting in September, don't we?
No.
No.
October 7th is the next.
Three weeks.
The city could work with, so...
I think that they sound like they feel like they're going to do it for it, right, with the three.
Oh, absolutely.
That I think we could go ahead and...
There's no reservations on our side to approach that third dumpster. If that's the major sticking point and concern, I give you my word that we will address that.
Fair enough.
Okay.
All right. Well, with that, then I'd move...
Fair enough.
74A and B, and rely on the commitment of the applicant, and maybe we can also address it in the site plan if needed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. End of the hearings at 5:16. Next item is item 50, commitment of $400,000 in home investment partnership program, home funds for construction of Alley Landing at 2701 Douglas Avenue, resulting in 40 affordable rental units, Council Communication Number 24-356.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting me speak to this. We have spent a lot of time talking about affordable housing. Laura, that's actually for the next one.
It's the next one.
That's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a great project in front of us, and I want to just give a quick acknowledgement to the developers who have been patient. I've been tough on them, trying to make sure that we have a excellent project. And I also want to give a shout out to the Neighborhood Association. We hear a lot about NIMBYism, but in this case, the Lower Beaver Neighborhood Association has been very welcoming. They've been attentive to making sure that it's a good project. And I think I can vouch for the fact that this is going to be a real asset to the neighborhood, to the Douglas Avenue corridor, and to the city. We've done a lot of affordable housing. All of us are familiar with the terms and issues. I want to point out that there has been a lot of housing developed at the 80% of area meeting income. This is in the 50 to 60 range for this particular one. There are also eight units in there that are for homeless that are beyond this number, and we think there'll be a second building coming in the years that follow this. So, this 40 units is just the first, and it's really important. We hear a lot of people that advocate for more affordable housing, and I thought it was worth pointing out that we have a really responsible, welcoming neighborhood and a great developer to make some units happen at the price point of what is most important in the community. So, with that, I will move item 50. There is a representative from Plaza Lanes in Woda. Chris, are you here? Do you want to speak to it? You don't have to.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. The next item. 69, amending sections 102-8, 102-615, and 3-23 of the municipal code relating to abandoned property and the removal of encroachments.
I'll move. I lost track of our agenda. I'm sorry.
It's 69.
Laura, can you help now? Do you mind? Yeah. This issue has had enormous amount of conversation. We've gathered here for three or four meetings to talk about it, plus two workshops. I'm comfortable knowing that the council has grappled with this and tried to form a compromise. I will tell you, I went back and looked at the very first kind of notes I wrote to myself, and I'll tell you what I wrote to myself on a Word document. I said that for us to be a great city, we had to address our issues head-on. And one of the issues that we had to figure out is how can we do better for the most vulnerable in our community? I said, number one, we need to be the best city where we are helping the vulnerable, the homeless, the unsheltered, get access to services and shelter for those people that really want the help of our community safety net. We have a great safety net made up by generous people and corporations that provide an enormous amount of service. an enormous amount of services for the most needy in Des Moines. That's number one. Number two, we also needed to come to the realization that to be a great city and to be safe in our neighborhoods, sidewalks and parks, camping is not compatible with a safe city that we want to deliver to our neighbors. And that compatibility has led us to today. I think before us, the council has had these before us. I want to make, take final action tonight. That's my recommendation and hope that we can do it. We have two different ordinances in front of us. But I want to walk through and make sure that everybody knows the full package of things that we're doing. I also want to make a suggestion on additional, an additional piece of, of, of work that people at the city have, have been looking at on our behalf. And I know the mayor has a few things to add to it. But the plan that we'll be voting on tonight is, is a final approval of the, the strategies that we've talked about at many different meetings over the last 10 weeks. First, the first item is to reduce barriers to emergency shelter use. The second one is to shelter animals when people have pets where they don't want to enter shelter. The third is to do a much better job protecting people's belongings and making sure they're in secured storage so that if they want to enter a, a shelter or services or treatment where they can't take their personal belongings, we can keep, keep track of them and keep them safe. We want to provide better and more reliable transportation from the campsites that people might choose to leave and go into shelter and services. We're going to add public restrooms in the downtown area to make sure that our, our most vulnerable, those without housing, have access. It's a, it's a, it's a common need for our city and other cities. It's also something that we've heard a fair number of complaints about to make sure that people can, can have access to such. We'll have four outreach workers, three new. We're doing three times as many as we did and we've had presentations on that over the last week. These outreach workers, social workers will be working with the homeless. And they'll, in fact, they'll be our first point of contact with the homeless to make sure that we know what their needs are, what, what we can do to break down their barriers and to get into the services and shelter that they need. We're going to hire a hearing officer so that we're very fair and we're not holding up the process for people and so that we can expedite those as a way to, to move forward. The last two are the ordinance changes. One is the abandoned property and the removal of encroachments. That'll be the first motion that I make. And the second motion will be item nine, which is the ordinance, chapter 102, related to prohibitive camp, camping. Those are the nine. We've also had some discussion and it's, it's, all of us have returned to some documents and studies that have been done. One of the studies that we've looked at is the GAPS analysis and, and the, the studies about homelessness and unsheltered. You can flip to the next page if you want, Laura. I'd, I'd like to suggest that we add a 10th thing. The city manager and Amber have helped me work with some of this language. But this would be a housing problem solving fund. Some communities and places refer to it as a diversion fund. There has been such a fund to help at different times in our community. Uh, I, I'm suggesting, and the manager has told me that he could reallocate funds. He will later let us know where that reallocation is from so, so that we can keep track of it. But that would be, these would be funds made available to the outreach workers, casework, case managed, to make sure that the transition from the streets to shelter and services is as seamless as possible. This, when you go back and read some of the GAPS analysis, this is a primary concern and stumbling block for many people leaving the streets and shelter. And I think as we round out the whole array of services and, and policies that we're passing tonight, it's important. There's some words here, I'll tell you, they're not really my words. I highlighted some of them from what Amber had provided me. But this is a flexible fund. It won't be managed by the city but be allocated in some grant form to, to, to a nonprofit to manage. We won't be responsible for the everyday use of it. I will tell you, this doesn't happen in a lot of cities or happen very often because this is real flexible funds. It's going to be hard to be able to say this is exactly what the budget is. The whole idea is that we have a pot of money to solve those things that are unexpected or unique for each person on the street. We want to help people transition and item number 10 of our plan is very important to that. And manager, I don't, you can talk at any point, but he and I have spoke about this a couple of times and he was the one that recommended that my motion be to reallocate funds and make that possible with the agreement that he would let us know when, when and how those funds were reallocated and to what agency they're provided to help. We will have some accountability of making sure they're spent the way we want it to. The manager will manage that. I don't think we have to worry about that level of detail at the council table. As the sheet gets shifted up, the mayor also has a couple of things as part of my motion and I'll turn it over to the mayor.
There's some other items we'd like to look into. Palat homes, temporary housing. Many cities have used those to find a location in the city that we own that might be used to put pallet homes geared for families, seniors, and the LGBTQ population that sometimes has problems with congregant setting. Number two is changing the ordinance that churches can use their parking lots to allow people to camp and that would enable them to open their facilities for warming location and cooling expectations. That is if they agree to. Some cities have done that also and I know we've had an outreach, we've discussed it with various churches and we're going to see about changing that ordinance to allow possibly so many campsites because during the week, there are some openings in space. Three is work to find a designated campsite for a temporary camp on a short-term basis. And that will be working with not only Des Moines but our area community to see if there's someplace that might be available. So those are three things I'd like to add to this.
Did you move that?
I, I've moved 12 of the 13 things in the first motion. What we aren't moving is item 70, which is the sleeping ordinance on my list. It's number nine.
So I'll move, I'll, I'll second 69 and just, just...
Hold on. We're moving second and then we're opening up our conversation.
Just, yeah, just, I just think it needs to be said. This isn't how it's handled right now. Right now, how it's handled is we just go up, put a sign up, don't talk to anybody, and then in 10 days, we come and clear their site. That, that is, that is not letting anyone with dignity live, whether it be next to a school where I've got to explain to parents why their kids are out on a playground looking at half naked men and women in the woods. We need to do better and we can. And I believe we've taken a lot of time on this ordinance to make sure that we are going to do the right things.
Okay.
So I'm happy to second it.
It's been seconded, moved and seconded. I'll open it up to...
Well, well, one, I've got a question if, in, in terms of process because there are a couple of these things that I'd like to vote for, but I don't intend to vote for item 69, which is I think the item that is in front of us. And the other items have not been noticed in, in any way. They were not part of the agenda. They've not been published. I don't know that we can...
The, the, the fund is new to me. I haven't heard that one. I think a council can give direction to the manager on, on what they would like to do. I'll, I'll speak with the manager to see, because the manager does have significant authority to reallocate funding already. So that may be possible. If there is additional roll calls that are required, those can be brought back later. But I think council can give the direction generally for the, these items that have been explained so far. It's just giving the manager direction. Any, anything else that requires further notice or action, we will bring that back for council.
Okay, so that has been moved and seconded with directions given to the manager or...
Well...
Do you have any?
No, it was pretty clear.
I mean, I, I have some questions, particularly since there are several of these things that even though we've had a couple of months of discussion, we've not talked about, talked about them at this table. So item 10, I think is great. I, I asked for something like that at our August 5th meeting. I'd like to understand where the dollars are coming from because if they're coming from what is also a needed service, it's maybe a little less great. And so understanding that, I also think that the $50,000 doesn't go very far. And that if, if we are intending to help house folks, it needs to be more, I mean, I think the early recommendation or suggestion was at least 100. This is half that and what it seems like is more symbolic than impactful. And again, the, the, the issue that I have and this embodies it is that we've had opportunities to talk about it and this was never talked about. This was never workshop. This was never part of a, a broader plan. And I wish we would have done that, particularly since we have had a significant amount of time as part of this, this process. Since we're going through the various pieces of, of the plan and the directives, I still have, even after two months, concerns with some of the other pieces of the directive. And I have concerns with the transparency. There are pieces of these directives that I still do not understand how they're being operationalized. So for example, I think it is positive that we're moving forward with, with collaboration with animal services to try and provide shelter for pets. I know some folks have criticized that, but that is, comes directly from the unsheltered study that we did with Drake and where we asked, asked people living on the streets what a barrier was. The piece that is concerning is I don't know how this program is structured. I don't know if it's modeled on best practice. I don't know how we're evaluating it. I know that there's some informal arrangement with the Animal Rescue League, but I don't know how we track it. And, and all of those things are, are kind of vague and ambiguous in this process. And we might get some information about it, we might not. I think it's positive, but it's, but that's mitigated by the fact that I don't know how to measure what we're doing. I don't know how to provide accountability to this particular item because the details are sparse and, and that hasn't been provided as part of this process previously. On personal storage, I know that where we are at is a shortcoming. You know, at, at the August 5th meeting, I, I raised concern about what a best practice personal storage process would look like. And that would allow someone to have individualized access to locked goods. It would be someplace that is accessible, that is open after normal business hours. The storage that we are providing is none of those things and, and there is no guarantee. In fact, at the August 5th meeting, what was said is that if we move forward with things, where things are at will be deemed adequate meeting of, of these items. I, I don't think our personal storage is designed in a way to be used by folks living on the street and I don't think it will provide a significant benefit. That to me is of concern. The transportation piece, I think, has some improvement. Initially, it started as just our police would be offering a ride. I think that is part of the role of outreach workers if they have capacity to provide transportation. I, I think that's positive, but I think it's a, a very limited transportation option. The public restrooms, and there I have significant concern. One of the pieces of feedback that I got and, and one of the things in reading about how these restrooms are, are to be structured to be successful is they should truly be public restrooms that the unsheltered members of our community use rather than trying to design them as something that, that is only for the unsheltered and hidden away because we know that there will be problems that come along with that. And I think we are designing these public restrooms in a way to fail. And my concern is, is that when they fail in the way that they are currently designed, which is in secluded places in a handful of our parking garages, when they fail, because it will be easy for folks to, to maybe inhabit them and stay in them longer or for there to be illicit activity in bathrooms, all these things are challenges in public restrooms. And they need, public restrooms need to be designed with intentionality, with durability in mind. There are options for that, but that's not what we're providing. And my concern is, is when these restrooms fail, that they will just go away and there won't be any restroom and we'll be, we'll kind of be back, back to square one. That's my concern with the public restroom piece. On the outreach workers, so I, I mentioned this at our work session last week. I feel like this was, again, this is a positive, but I feel a little bit misled from, I thought this was for new outreach workers. And that clearly is not the intent. The intent is for outreach workers, which means that these workers could go away when the funding goes away. And this hasn't been transparent either. At the, at the meeting, at our work session, when I asked who is funding this and how is this funded, I, I wasn't, I was told, well, you'll have to wait till Monday. When I asked about it pre-meeting, I've been told some of the sources, the city's going to kick in about $40,000 a year for two years. An operation downtown's kicking in and then it's an anonymous donor that, that is kicking in. So I have no sense of whether or not that funding is sustainable, how, how we can, if this will keep going beyond, beyond the two years. I know that the ordinance we're about to enact is in place in perpetuity unless we repeal it. But, but this is a, this is a two-year commitment that is not clear who is entirely making the commitment or, or what, what happens at the end of that two-year period. The other thing that is notable to me about the outreach piece of this, and this goes more to, to the next ordinance that hasn't been moved, but when we had the outreach workers here, one of the things that they noted was the large number of people on wait lists for housing in our community. And there are a number of different barriers to that. Some of it, it's just the lack of housing, that the lack of permanent supportive housing, housing that comes with the services that folks need. And that's a challenge and people can be waiting for years for, for that type of housing. But they, they also wait for other types of housing. And then there is, I think, the, the piece where the $50,000 we're providing is, is meant to be a help in some of it. They talked about, you know, the folks they're trying to serve are high barrier folks and that there are barriers to them getting housing, even if it's a private landlord that has something that is affordable, that have high barriers. And I asked them what some of those barriers were. And some of those barriers were past evictions, poor credit history, but it also includes criminal history. So what, what we are doing with item 10 in, in providing housing assistance to lower those barriers, we're doing something that is the exact opposite with item nine, which is enacting a new criminal ordinance and that will criminalize the very folks that we are, that we are hoping, hoping to help. And that to me is the piece that, the piece that makes the least sense. I think this would be a much better process. Even though I don't agree with the encroachment piece, is if we just stopped after that and worked on these items, which I think are an improvement, you know, these, these other pieces that would have been better if they came before any ordinance change and separate from an ordinance change, but are positive things that if we just worked on those things, evaluated the impact they were having, put this in the context of the broader needs assessment. Again, this is another piece that we have not done. We haven't, and I asked about this at August 5th, at our August 5th meeting. Could we have the Homeward folks come in and give a report on the GAPS analysis? We have never done that as a council. If we are talking about taking a comprehensive approach to homelessness, we should look at the study within our own community that took a comprehensive look at what the gaps are to serving homeless folks in our community. We have not done that as a council and in... We have not done that as a council, and in fact, since then, we canceled a work session where we could have had them come in. We just canceled it, rather than engage in this discussion. We canceled the work session on August 19.
It was on other topics, yes.
We canceled it on August 19. We could have had them, they have a presentation prepared. We could have had.
We didn't cancel anything on Homeward.
We can't.
Don't give them false information.
We canceled.
Okay, guys. Okay, Joe?
I did not say it was part of the Homeward presentation. We canceled our work session. We could have used that time that was held on everyone's calendar to have this conversation. And it was something that I asked this council to take the time to do, and we still have not done that. I do also have questions. I'm glad to hear this conversation on the Palat Homes, but let's be transparent about that, because we've started that conversation. We had presentations on Palat Home and Design, and we know that there is a cost to that. My understanding is that is why it hasn't moved forward, because the folks at Palat Homes recommend that the supportive services be wrapped around this. It's an operating budget of about $1.5 million a year.
That's what you say right now, but before we're looking at it, and we're going to look at other alternatives, a different site where we believe we can do it much more cost-effective. So we know there are needs. So before you go on to the cost, let us get the right numbers, though, before you say what the numbers are and who might come forward to help.
Well, I would certainly welcome that. And, you know, I know we had separate meetings about Palat Home. The cost was, I believe, the folks who were doing the Palat Home, that was their recommended operational budget, based on their experience in a number of other communities. And I know we had looked at the Harriet Street site, and apparently, we're not willing to use that Harriet Street site, but...
Because of the cost. We're looking at other places. She just said that the cost is going to be cheaper, Josh. Oh, I mean...
Well, I guess my question is, what information do we have? Because my understanding of the cost, the cost of the homes is not the barrier. The Palat Homes is a lower cost. That's a relatively flat-rated area already, so we're not going to find anything much cheaper for putting Palat Homes on it. The bulk of the cost is providing the services that go with it.
That's what I have asked. That's one thing we're adding, to give the directive to the city manager and his staff to look into it more, so that we can find out what is the true cost, what will entail. And that's why I added on, to make sure that it is looked into in another way, other than the Harriet locations. I just want to make it clear that we're...
And the cost for the Harriet location, the bulk of the cost was running utilities to that specific site. That was the bulk of the cost. So if we can find a place that already has utilities in place, that we can put that wraparound service, the cost will go down, and we'll be able to build it a lot cheaper. And that's what the mayor's been working on.
That's why it's a directive to the city manager.
Yeah. My understanding is that the operational cost, regardless, again, this goes back to, I wish we were having these conversations before we're at a final reading. And I would hope, you know, I think this would all be better, and these additions would be, I think, received better by the broader community, if we only went forward with the encroachment ordinance that is proposed, and we tabled the other ordinance. And we can, because this clearly is still very much a work in progress.
On the newer items that were added, because we've already taken a vote on many of the others, so many of the items we had discussed in our other meetings, and that's why we're adding more as we get, but we'll have to look at costs, just as we got people to help donate, people have asked what more can they do. So some of the costs will be absorbed probably by philanthropy.
Right. But here's one of the things that concerns me. And I would like us to take a comprehensive approach, so we identify needs, we prioritize those needs, because, for example, from a philanthropic perspective, I'd maybe place more value on what we're calling Item 10, the Housing Diversion Fund, than I would on, say, for example, the outreach workers, potentially. Because I want to know if what the outreach workers end up doing is contacting folks and being in touch with them and saying, well, we're at the point where we can't help you further, because you're ready for housing, we don't have that housing available. A fund would help that. But when we do this piecemeal, and at the last minute, and in an untransparent way, we're not optimizing what we could be doing. And similarly, I'm not sure about how outreach workers fit in with diversion fund, fit in with rapid rehousing, fit in with permanent supportive housing, fit in with the other needs in that gap analysis. I'd like us to take that type of comprehensive approach and have that discussion. And we're now on two months of this and have not invited that type of discussion as part of this. And that, to me, is a real concern.
Okay. Counselor, anyone else?
The good thing is, we're going to start our budget process, and you're going to be a part of it.
Counselor, Lynn Coleman, did you have some more comments?
I appreciate the way everybody's coming at this. My thought is, I don't want to do it piecemeal either. I want to do it as one package. I think it talks about the commitment the council and the city have to doing this right. Is the $50,000 the right amount of money? I don't know. But it doesn't mean it's the last allocation, but I think it gives us a chance to test it in a period of time, so we come back when we know it's a necessity, and it's being well-used, to have better stipulations, rules, authority to do it. This, to me, is a, it's money for a little bit of a pilot, a trial, a laboratory, so that we know what is working and what isn't. I'm fully aware that if we want to transition 130 people that are unsheltered on our streets, it's going to take more than $50,000. But that's not all going to happen this summer and this fall. We're able to evaluate it, look at it, and work with our case managers to make sure that it happens. I see these 13 things as both starting some regulations and rules to try and make sure that the council, the city, the city manager's office, the police department, everybody has a shared point of view on it. And we need to do better, and we need to do it quickly, of helping people get off the unhealthy and dangerous streets of Des Moines and into shelters and services where their lives can be improved. This $50,000, is a down payment on that. It's not everything that we're going to need, but I do think it gives us a period of time to figure it out and make sure we know what we need to know, so we can come back permanently.
Okay, there's Ben. Does anyone else have a comment?
I hear me, I made a comment.
Yes.
I am going to vote no. When I ran for election, it was a seven-and-a-half-week campaign. I met with 74 different groups. The number-one issue that came out of that campaign was homelessness without exception. And I think, if anything, this ordinance has been a clarion call to say the community is paying attention and really desires solutions. Having said that, I am very optimistic that we are going to be providing heavy, heavy solutions. This is at the forefront of our minds. The people in this audience aren't going to go anywhere. We're not going to go anywhere, and I look forward to working with council and staff. We're going to solve this.
Okay, with anyone else? If not, been moved and seconded, please vote.
Items 1 through 13 minus Item 9.
Five yes, two no.
Motion carries. Number 70 is amending Chapter 102 of the municipal code relating to prohibited camping.
I'll move 70.
Second.
I've made comments.
I'd like to talk about this item in particular.
I have word. We are, go right ahead.
It says voting in progress.
It was left over.
I haven't voted yet. I'll vote after a talk. I had a number of questions, because to me, this ordinance still has a lot of ambiguity. It's unclear exactly what the process will be, and I wanted to highlight a few of those things, because I asked about them. Some of this goes to the changes that were made, and those are being presented as improvements, and I don't fully understand those changes. So one of them was about the intent, the intent being to focus on compliance and not use this as an enforcement mechanism. And I asked about that, and asked how that would be interpreted by the folks who are actually meant to implement and enforce this. And the response I got from the city manager on that particular question was that some members of the city council asked for the term "compliance" to be added. It does not have a technical definition. It is, it's unclear to me what will happen there. I also asked, how will the intent be measured? And that's the intent for compliance versus enforcement. And I asked if there are a threshold number of citations or arrests, what will indicate if the intent is being met or not? And even though we're two months into this process, the response was, staff is meeting to establish key metrics. And I don't know if we will expect to see those. I don't know, you know, if there was weight behind the intent. I would hope that there is some type of metric or accountability. I also asked about some of the other pieces of the ordinance that I think it's important to understand, because one of the things that was touted were what we're calling affirmative defenses. Those are, you know, the ordinance, it's an affirmative defense to a citation or an arrest on the ordinance if space is unavailable in a shelter, if someone's a minor, or if they're indigent. And I asked what that meant. I specifically asked how we define, or how the ordinance defines "space is unavailable", and the response is, the ordinance does not define "space is unavailable". I think it's important that the public know this piece of the response. As an operational directive, "space unavailable" will be deemed to mean over 95% bed/cot utilization at a shelter. So I think that's beyond just the beds, it's the emergency cots as well. But that is an operational directive, and so that is subject to change. And the public doesn't have to know if all of a sudden "unavailable" becomes 100% occupancy, if "space unavailable" means, you know, there's a chair in the shelter that someone could sit in. It's unclear what "space unavailable" will mean, but we have at least the starting point from the manager. And another piece that is unclear, I asked about this, "space is unavailable" is not actually a term that our providers will use. So if you call up our provider, our providers, and ask, is there space? They will almost always say there's space, because they're in the mission to serve. And so our ordinance is inconsistent with the operational parameters of the shelters, even though this piece of the ordinance relies on space being unavailable in the shelters. So it strikes me as that's a defense that will be very hard for someone to ever use in the context of this ordinance. I also talked a little bit about the, or asked about the enforcement piece of this, and the implications for arrest and jail time. And in particular, one of the things is, what happens if there is a citation or arrest for a criminal infraction? So someone gets a hearing date for that infraction. If you're homeless, you might not get notice of when that hearing is, because I don't know where they would send notice for something like that. But if you don't show up for your court date, either because you don't know, or because, you know, you've been pushed from your current encampment to one that is even less accessible than where you were when you got your citation, and you can't get to the courthouse to make your appearance, if you were going to, you end up with contempt order, right, or failure to appear. And the failure to appear results in an FTA warrant, and someone can end up jailed under that FTA warrant. So even though imprisonment is not an offense for, under our ordinance, the practicality of this is that imprisonment is very much a factor that could come into play in a reality And then, finally, I'd like to address the changes from a fine perspective. And, you know, over the course of this, folks have said, it's an improvement, because we've gone from a $150 fine to a $50 fine to now a $15 fine. But the biggest harm is not the fine. It makes no difference someone who's not going to be able to pay a $150 fine or a $15 fine. The biggest harm is the fact that this is a criminal infraction. And a criminal infraction creates a barrier. We claim that we are trying to solve barriers to housing. A criminal infraction creates a barrier to housing. It creates a barrier to employment. It creates a barrier to all the things that we say we are trying to solve. So that, to me, is the biggest problem with this. We are criminalizing not a behavior that we find problematic, right? We already have laws against littering, against public urination and defecation, against public intoxication. We're not figuring out how to enforce those things better than we have, because those apply not just to our homeless residents, they apply to all of us. But it's that behavior. I'd be okay if we were thinking about how we enforce that a little better and a little more consistently. But what we are criminalizing is sleeping outdoors.
In your front yard, in your neighborhood.
No, no, we're not criminalizing. We're not criminalizing. It's already a crime. It's already a crime for someone who, I don't know, to just show up on my yard and sleep in my yard. That's trespass. That's trespass.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, Ms. Zerbato.
We are criminalizing homelessness.
We're criminalizing camping.
And what I look at, and where I take my cue on this, right, I go back to Justice Sotomayor's dissent in Grants Pass, and she specifically, this debate about whether or not we're criminalizing homelessness is the same debate that, you know, that the Supreme Court had, where the Roberts and the other justices lined up on one side. Justice Sotomayor pointed out that what we are criminalizing in this act, the act of sleeping outdoors, is the very thing that makes someone homeless in our community. And that is what we are criminalizing. And we do not need to do that, to take a different approach, to take a more comprehensive approach, to think about how we come up with a plan. This is completely superfluous and unnecessary, and it is wrong, and I cannot vote for it.
It's not surprising. So is there anyone else have any other comments? I think on, we'll give to the city manager, since you're concerned about how they're going to interpret it, we'll let the city manager, because many of these things are operational, and we, as a council, normally do not... operational, and we as a council normally do not get involved in setting exact how every detail is minutia is done. It's left up to our city manager and his staff, who have expertise in many of the areas. And I think we've given clear direction on what we're trying to do, because I know that we have heard from people who have experienced issues with people that have been camping, and some of the, some of the things that have been taken and confiscated, and some of those things, yes, there, we're hearing from both sides. And I think that we have to account for having a safe, clean community for everyone, whether you're experiencing having to camp, because some of those sites, we know, are not healthy, not safe. And then the people that live in our community that have experienced it. So I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Mayor and council, I just have three very quick clarifications from when I heard. At its easiest definition, compliance will be the halting of prohibited acts, so the camping and the sleeping. So that, that would be the definition of compliance. It's, it's important to recognize that the vast majority, as shown by our point in time count, of those that are homeless are sheltered at any given point. And these, these ordinances are addressing those that are unsheltered, which is a much smaller percentage.
Seventy-six percent of our homeless are sheltered, which is the highest percentage we've had in, in some time, as far as we can research.
So they are separate classifications, and that we're focused in on the unsheltered, the unsafe portion of, of those. And then lastly, I would say that, yes, there is, this is considered a simple misdemeanor, but that is no different than a speeding ticket on their record.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded.
Yes.
And at this time, I would say please vote.
Five yes, two no.
Motion carries.
No!
Item 75, directing advertisement for sale and approving electronic bidding procedures, an official statement for $57,645,000 general obligation bonds, series 2024A. Bonds will be sold at a special meeting on Wednesday.
Move, Your Honor.
October 2nd. Please vote. Motion carries. Item 76. Directing advertisement for sale and approving electronic bidding procedures, an official statement for $10,185,000 taxable general obligation bonds. If anybody would like to leave, you can do so now. If anybody wants to continue to disrupt the meeting, you're more than welcome to leave. Where was, on taxable general obligation bonds, series 2024B. Bonds will be sold at a special meeting on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, at 4:30.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 77, authorization to negotiate agreements necessary for Primary Healthcare, Inc., to provide outreach services to unsheltered individuals within the city of Des Moines.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, please vote.
I just have a question for the manager. When do we anticipate, since the ordinance is now in effect?
It's not into effect until all the things come forward.
It's, we, we passed an ordinance, the ordinance is in effect, whether or not the manager implements is another question. When do we anticipate, when do we anticipate that this contract will be in place?
I would hope that the contract is in place within the next week. And then it's a matter of working with Primary Healthcare to make sure that they're able to hire and get people on board. Excellent.
Motion carries. Items 78.
Did we have seven I?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I thought maybe it got changed. 2080 agreement with Polk County for provisions of services for individuals seeking support, and referrals for treatment for substance abuse and acute mental health services. That would be the sovereign center.
Move approval, Your Honor. It's a great program. Thank you to Polk County, Broadlawns, and all of us. And thank you Scott for your staff.
Yep.
Yes, moved and seconded, please vote.
Seconded.
Item 78, amending chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council communication number 24-361. A, parking modification, Southwest 9th Street between Rose Avenue and Watrous Avenue. B, parking modification of East Broadway Avenue, Hubble Avenue, North Frontage Road between East Broadway Avenue and Hubble Avenue. C, parking modification of 24th Street between Cottage Grove Avenue, Drake Park Avenue. D, traffic control modification at East Vine Street at intersections with East 15th, Southeast 15th Street, Astor, Southeast Astor Street, and East 16th to Southeast 16th Street. E, code correction, 7th Street between Clark Street and College Avenue. F, code correction, East Lacona Avenue at Southeast 8th Street. G, corner clearance, parking restrictions, Arthur Avenue and East 42nd Street. 2, Bennett Avenue and 30th Street. 3, East Deal Avenue and Jordan Drive. 4, East Peyton Avenue and Southeast 3rd Street.
I'll move 78, A through G, 1, 2, 3, 4, and pursuant to Route 42A.
Did I hear somebody was here to speak?
Oh, is somebody here to speak? Is there any speaking on?
Okay. Come on up.
We don't usually have anyone speaking on this. If you have something you'd want to take up with us afterwards, we can.
I won't, I won't waive this.
Afterwards, it's very simple. It's something that don't exist, that we didn't need to be here for, because it don't happen, and nobody does park on that street. We have a lot of crazy neighbors, and I realize all the problems we have tonight. We have a lot of things to do in our city.
We can just approve the first reading. Okay.
I, I'll only, I'll only do the first reading, and then we can take up the other. So I'll just move 78, A through G, and 1, 2, 3, 4, for the first reading.
Then if we're, if we're not going to waive the second and third reading, then I would like to amend it, and hopefully they'll go back and look at it in front of the operating engineers. We've left parking there, and they would prefer not to have any parking there. Check with traffic and transportation, and I was told that we could pass it tonight.
Wait the second, third.
Or if we're not, then we could ask to have that amendment added, because you get people that don't have anything to do with operators, engineers.
Okay.
That's their part there. In fact, operators and engineers would have to hire somebody to tow cars away that are parked in there.
So we'll just do the first reading, and then we'll make the amendments that she needs, and then we can talk to Larry and, and figure out.
So you're putting down a hole for now, you're not voting on?
We're only voting on the first reading. It takes three readings.
Okay, because it's really sad. When we get a letter that affects our business, and then all of a sudden.
We're going to be working on it.
You guys need some rough meetings.
Okay, sir. Skirt.
She's the one heading this up.
Skirt.
I'll tell them.
Okay.
We will be back.
That's fine.
And you will not push us off again. I'm tired of the way the stuff's run in this city.
Please vote. Who's seconded? Okay, please vote.
Seven yes.
We provide speakers under the public speaking portion, the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes, each for up to 20 speakers for a total of one hour agenda. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name and address or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, the speaking time, public speaking time is not a time for the council to engage in discussion. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or council follow-up at this time. So with that, the first speaker is Sally Davis.
Joe needs to be out here, though, listen to us. He just walked away.
Well, he will be back. I appreciate that. That's fine. Is Sally Davis even here?
No.
Zoe Frye?
Yeah, I want to wait until he's here.
But your two minutes, okay, your two minutes are starting, so I would suggest.
It's three.
Or three?
It's three minutes. And I want Joe to be out here, because he needs to hear this.
Your three minutes have started, so let's speak.
My name is Zoe. Okay, and that is enough. We're trying to hear the speaker speak. My name is Zoe Frye, and I worked for Iowa Homeless Youth Centers downtown for two years as direct staff with young adults who are at risk or unhoused. I could tell you stories about all of them, who I was privileged to know by name, their lives, the things they loved, and the futures they dreamed of having. Six I know I worked with who have died from these systems failing them, but doesn't begin to account for the lives who go unwritten in the papers or unclaimed in the morgues. I want to tell you about one of them in particular. I worked with him daily to set up payment plans so he could pay off fines that he acquired. He worked very hard to do that while paying expensive application fees just to get denied for housing and still lived on the streets. He also suffered from psychosis, which meant that every day we discussed the horrifying manipulative things that his brain forced him to think and hear. He wasn't prescribed proper medication due to have, due to having a prior history of substance use that he only developed so he could stay awake at night to wander the streets so police wouldn't arrest him for sleeping, to avoid yet another fine. He missed therapy appointments because his phone would die, and he couldn't afford data to reach people anyways, but he was still making sure to pay those fines. My coworker and I made the difficult decision to commit him to stabilize his mental health, but he wasn't there long enough to see that through because another person needed to replace his presence in the psych unit. Do you understand that the little to no beds that we have here means that they prioritize one severity in mental health over the other? His fines, mental health, lack of supports, and the city failed him. He was released into an environment with nothing set in place to help keep him stable, and he died. He wanted to do right by society, trying to face these barriers, and still could not meet your expectations. Chris Coleman and I had a brief conversation, and he explained that these ordinances are meant to do something about the unhoused people's behaviors, to which I asked him if he knew why they had these behaviors in the first place, and he responded, because they've lived hard lives and have been through tough things. Chris also told me about wonderful plans like expanding Ellipsis, but not for two more years, if even then. But what about right now? As a social worker in Des Moines, this community does not have the capacity to expand ourselves with the little resources and support we already struggle to have. Each one of your websites has a common theme, improving our community. Do you think that criminalizing people who are a part of your community will improve anything at all? If the answer is yes, it's because people are putting money in your pockets. I worked overtime with a bachelor's degree in human services required by my nonprofit job for $15 an hour because I loved the people that I worked with. And the community, more than the people who are paying you to vote on this. The irony from my conversation with Chris Coleman and telling him.
Samantha Exine.
He would have been with us doing the same thing.
Samantha Exine.
Where has your compassion gone?
Samantha.
I want to believe all of you.
Jeff Krugler. Jeff Krugler.
Hi, Laura Faraci. I live here in Des Moines. I'm a little hesitant to give my address, because we're going to be on YouTube.
No, you don't have to give your address. It's fine.
First of all, thank you, Josh, for your leadership. Thank you, Mike. I wasn't sure about you, but now I know. Thank you. Voss, ugh, so disappointed in you. So disappointed in you, Connie. So disappointed. The others, I don't really know what to say. And as our manager, because, I mean, I could come up here, I'm hangry, because it's dinner time, I could rant and rave, but I really just have one question. How are you going to pay for this? So the $150 was going to help pay for this program, right? Program, this ordinance. Now that you're going to be charging $15 with people that don't have the money, you're going to hire more people to help with this, there's already stuff in place. We've got AMIS doing stuff. We've got CCI doing stuff. Invest DSM, you know, it's sort of, we're a little yiffy on that, but it's, it's helping people with keep their homes sometimes. I just don't get it. Why would you pass an ordinance and then say, well, it's not in effect yet? You've passed it. If, if you didn't want to pass it, then don't. And then do better, like do better governance. You know, like Karen Bass in LA, she said, no, no, I don't have to do this just because this crappy Supreme Court said it's okay to do it, which, by the way, should not be your goal. Look at what Karen Bass is doing, okay? She's got the same problems we do here with a downtown that is sort of decimated with the workforce. It's going to take time, but you've pissed a lot of people off, and now we don't trust you, because this was shoddy.
Jolynn Prescott.
What is there left to say that hasn't already been said? You have, that you haven't already ignored. The council has squandered opportunity after opportunity to show they are human beings of compassion. The unhoused of Des Moines are human and deserve respect more than most of you. The friends that I have that have been unhoused have gone through the struggles that you could never imagine, which might explain your inhumanity. The lack of empathy displayed by this council made up of white, upper-class individuals is sickening. Des Moines humors itself as a safe haven for the marginalized. You have proven that is not the case. You could have given tax breaks or other incentives to mental health professionals. You choose not to, instead giving credits to mega corporations and ignoring the plight of those you represent. You could incentivize low-income house builders, rather you choose high rises and condos. You could fund programs to feed people, to expand shelters. You choose to criminalize those already suffering. You chose cruelty. I am sorry that the unhoused can't afford Appalicious at the fair. I am sorry the homeless can't afford to mortgage a house, eat a burrata's, or be part of the Better Business Bureau, but they are part of this community. And you have failed them. The Des Moines City Council is a heartless disgrace. My name is Heaven Chamberlain, Ward 2.
Ian Schaefer. Robert McGregor. Are you Ian?
Ian.
Okay.
Good evening, council. My name is Ian Schaefer, and I'm a junior at North High School. I am currently taking an AP seminar class at Central Academy, and throughout this entire month, we've been focused on this ordinance, item 70 on the docket today. And today, I'm here to speak on how this is a complete attack onto our homeless community. In this class, this entire month, we've covered the entirety of the topic. We have all tried to find our own solutions into which this council has failed to do this entire term. Instead of dehumanizing, instead of dehumanizing people, we treat people in our community with respect. This class is focused around benefiting ourselves as leaders within the community, and yet I think that I believe every single person on this council should take that class, because none of you guys are leaders. Instead of downsizing the issue, we protect and stand up for what's right. Instead of criminalizing the less fortunate, we help them get on their feet. While we may be young, and I'm only 16, and we don't have all the solutions to the problems, we definitely have better ideas to how we can fix this, rather than each of you guys, which have put forth a criminalizing issue upon our homeless community. Let's look at our city budget that was passed this past June. We set aside $4.5 million in homeless grants. Back in 2022, it was up to $6 million. That is a $1.5 million decrease in our budget to help our homeless community. We also put aside only $3.1 million for public housing. Let's look at something really funny in this budget. Let's look at something really funny in this budget. Our golf budget has increased over $100,000 since 2022. Why are we prioritizing golf over our homeless community? This council feeds on criminalizing as many people as they can. This council does not represent our community. This council represents on making money off of the less fortunate. This is a disgrace of the, of the council that's supposed to be the most liberal council within the state of Iowa. After all, mine and my classmates' research, I realize that us 16- and 17-year-olds somehow have a better sense of humanity than our elected leaders within the city.
Robert McGregor. Xavier Bradford.
My name is Xavier Bradford. I live in Des Moines. This is my first city council meeting, and I'm not very good at public speaking, but I wanted to give, come up here and express my opinion. I have been homeless before. I've lived in the camps, and they are not the best place to be. However, I think criminalizing people for sleeping outside is not the way to go, and I feel that that's what happened with this council today, is they have criminalized people for things that are beyond their control. And I don't think that they're addressing the core issues of homelessness, be it addiction, mental health, economic misfortunes. They are not addressing these things. And I think that if we were able to find a way to, to do that, it would show that you guys have empathy for the community. Just like the young man before me said, there's funds going towards things that that could be reexamined, I feel. Perhaps, you know, instead of, you know, the golf fund like he was talking about, apply that towards this issue of homelessness and maybe figuring out a way to assist with, with the transition of homelessness into housing. I think we can find a way to do better by our community, and not only that, but by criminalizing the homelessness, the homeless, I think that you're compounding hardships. People are already going through a hardship of homelessness, of not having enough to eat and not having proper medical care, living in the woods, and that's a hardship. And by imposing fines and jail sentences on these people are, are compounding these hardships. And it's just creating a more of a record for people who are already struggling with, with jail, with jail records and everything. And I feel that by moving the problem out of the downtown area, just by, you know, purging them out of, out of sight, out of mind in a sense, is not really solving the problem, it's just kind of sweeping it under the rug. And I just really think that we, as, as a community, can help these people in a better way and be more empathetic and more sympathetic to these, these plights. And with that, I'd like to conclude. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Burghardt. Helena Haddock. Adam Calhanan, or Helena, are you? Okay.
I'm going to change the subject. I've got a handout. It's going on. I don't know, I'll just...
Make a motion to receive and file a handout.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I'm changing the subject. Sorry, folks, I appreciate what you're, what you're doing. So I'm talking about something different. I'm a resident. I live on 56th Street, just south of Grand Avenue, and I was blindsided recently when our new neighbors to the east of us decided to take down a bunch of old growth trees, the oldest residents in Des Moines. And we had no idea that was going to happen. All of us, our backyards are butted against this large lot, and these trees were all along our property line, so now instead of shady yards, we have sunny yards. I contacted several city council members. I also communicated with a city arborist and was told there's nothing Des Moines can do to save our canopy of trees. So that's what I wanted to talk about. As you look at the handouts, you see the difference in our yards on the last couple of pages. After I talked with city council members and the arborist, I noted that we have lost a lot of trees in Des Moines. In fact, the state of Iowa has lost 7.2 trees, 7.2 million trees since the DeRay Show of 2020. We've also lost many trees to other forms of weather problems, disease, and indiscriminate removal by construction companies and private property owners. And I understand they want to remove the trees, but I think they need to, if it's along a property line, they need to communicate with their neighbors. So I decided to look at other cities and how they regulate tree removal, and I've listed several there, but a couple I want to mention is in Atlanta, Georgia. They protect all the hardwood trees. In San Jose, if somebody wants to remove a tree, they have to apply for a permit. Once this permit's received from the city council, a notice has to be posted in the front yard, and there may be a public hearing on it. Most cities who have, who regulate old growth trees and their removal require that they have at least a trunk circumference of 30 inches at 4.5 feet above the ground. And like I said, if, many cities also require an arborist, city arborist, or forester to confirm that the tree is dead, diseased, or a possible risk to people or structures. So for Des Moines' future, I think we need to save our tree canopy, especially as we start to encounter global warming. Trees enhance our outdoor environment. They provide home to wildlife. They provide privacy. They baffle noises. They provide cleaner air, and they improve our property values. So let's protect the oldest residents of Des Moines.
Thank you. Laura. Adam Calhanan.
Hello, my name is Adam Calhanan. I live in Ward 3. Before I start the main part of my comment, I wanted to also reference that on the consent agenda today, Des Moines paid out $900,000 related to settlements with the MPD victims in 2020 protests. I just think the $900,000 number is good to point out, especially when we're talking about so much of where could we have money to fund housing? If we had a less violent police department, we'd have, I think, over $1 million easily if we looked at the other settlements, more to put towards housing. First, I wanted to talk about the timeline backup for a second, talk about some things in the past. April 19th, 2021, council actually considered sending out things like showers and dumpsters to homeless encampments to, like, help people out there experiencing homelessness, to make it easier for them to move on and get jobs, et cetera. Won't go into it. Council members were considering this, but specifically two members of city staff, Suzanne Donovan and Scott Sanders, said that bringing services like that to homeless encampments would enable the encampments. So that's one reason why we're where we are today. Also, 10 years ago, backing even further up, there's an article from October 2014, so almost exactly 10 years ago, where specifically Coleman and Gatto both pushed back against affordable housing. Another reason why we are here today, and I want to point that out especially because Coleman has told people a lot, "I'm new here. I haven't done anything with this," when he was here before and he was blocking affordable housing 10 years ago. January 14th of 2022, council elected not to adopt warming centers for homeless individuals in the winter. And then November 7th of 2022, Homeward presented a work session, at a work session, about the housing issues around Des Moines that the homeless people are facing. And then the study, the Drake University Unsheltered Study came out a week later on November 14th. The reason why I'm bringing this up is I'm bringing up a lot of things that happened before when, you know, the city could have had an opportunity to solve this issue in like a less urgent, less, I don't know what to call it, just urgent way, less, just sudden way. Instead, what seemed to have changed the city into taking action is that on June 28th, as many people have referenced of this year, the Grants Pass decision came out, where the Supreme Court said that it was actually okay if you wanted to criminalize being homeless. They'd say a different way, but that's basically what it practically did. After that decision, enforcement on homeless individuals' encampments increased pretty much immediately. And then on July 18th, suddenly these ordinances that we've all know about are announced. For some council people, that was the first time they even saw them. I just wanted to point that out, that that's really what started this, was not a desire to help homeless people, it was the fact that the city was now allowed to punish them. That is literally, if you look at the calendar, what started this. Some things the city is not willing to do, I just want to mention them for my time's up. Hold a public discussion about this, attend town halls that were held about this, delay hearings until the directives were met, even by the city's own count, only three of the seven were met, or allow comments times like today. There's still no budget, the directives are not met, there's no answers for basic questions, and we still don't even know the budget and money going towards this.
Monica.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Councilwoman Mendelbaum, for your consistent pushback in questioning the legitimacy of these ordinances. We don't always see eye to eye, but I appreciate your efforts on this. I'm not going to speak on the ordinances tonight. You've shown time and time again that you don't care what your constituents think. Unless they're donating to your campaign or they hold some institutional power you want, this council fundamentally does not care about them. It's embarrassing to live in a city that immediately picked up such a cruel and backward decision from the Supreme Court to enact policy. You didn't have to do that. Scott, this is yet another short-sighted, cruel, expensive, and wasteful ordinance. That seems to be your specialty. Your tenure at the city of Des Moines will be remembered for its failures. Its hatred of poor and working-class people, its hatred of black and brown people, and its overwhelming neglect of the people who live in this city. I wish I had more time to name off your failures. Chris, you have been a massive disappointment. I'll be emailing you each a copy of that same Register article in 2014, where this body proposed a moratorium on multifamily housing until the city's own legal department advised against it. Quote, "What is happening on Hubble is just horrific. There's just one apartment complex after another." Councilman Coleman, and I quote, "There's no reason that we should provide incentives for these multifamily projects if we aren't sure we want them to begin with." This isn't surprising, coming from your tenure, Connie. I've known who you were since March of 2021, when you appointed a multiple-accused sexual predator to a city task force. I called you personally and explained that other organizations have put out public statements in support of his survivors. You said to me, and I quote, "That you didn't know what the big deal was. It was over Zoom, and he couldn't assault me over the screen." I've known who you were ever since that day. These ordinances are coming from your administration are like saying water is wet. We know, we knew that your time as mayor would be painful and violent to the most vulnerable in our city. These ordinances will be your legacy. They will follow you to events, to galas, to dinners, to your favorite coffee shops and restaurants. We'll be at your businesses. We are dealing with an affordable housing crisis that this council is directly responsible for. You will be remembered for this, for your cruelty and shortsightedness, and for your gleeful disregard for your constituents. So expect us.
Hi. I'm Chris Gregerson. I live in Ward 3 on 44th Street. I'm an active member of St. John's Lutheran Church on the unhousing team, and I have served meals at Central Iowa Shelters for over 17 years, and I have assisted with Connection Cafe with a free lunch program. I had a prepared speech of where I was going to go, but you've already passed the ordinance. So I'm here to tell, to ask you, please don't initiate it, Scott, because all the directives have not been met. There are barriers to still getting in the shelter. I know you're working on that, and I applaud that. But a $15 fine, when I'm afraid for my life, my health, for being bullied because of who I am or what I am, that I cannot go to the shelter. If I have PTSD, I will not go to the shelter. So there are many reasons that that's important. I appreciate the comments. Josh, you're making regarding the directives. Bathrooms, very much needed, but hiding them is, so I appreciate those type of things. Continue to work on the directives. I came here to thank you for looking at this issue, but to also ask you not to pass this because criminalizing sleeping is not helpful. It is going to be dangerous for many reasons that have already been echoed by many others here. One of the other comments came out was regarding the faith community being active. I do want to thank Amber and Malcolm for reaching out to the faith community. We had a good meeting, but the faith community has been active for a long history. Central Iowa Shelters used to be called Churches United. Eight churches started it. There are closed closets. There's the bridge. There's the free store. There's countless other things that the faith community. And we will continue to meet, and we will continue to look at ways that we can be advocates, the ways that we can add services, and we would actually like to partner with you. But, so we are looking for ways to do that, but we look for you to welcome us to the table so that we can discuss this with you. So I want you to continue to work on directives. Please don't make this punitive. That is not going to help. But we need, the main issue is housing. You hear it again and again. It's affordable housing, rapid housing. Continue to look at ways to help housing for women, women with children, families with dependents, people with alternative lifestyles, low income. The media has brought a lot of attention to this. That's actually good. We're talking. We need to continue the conversation so that we can include ways to find ways to deal with healthcare, job development, et cetera. Scott, today I heard on NPR a quote from you that said, "The heart of what we want to do is to get individuals into safe environments." We agree with you. This ordinance doesn't do that. So please look at ways for housing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Dr. James Sutton. If you want to state your name and address or ward.
My name is Jim Sutton. I live at 4324 Kingman Boulevard. All over this city, construction is going on to install storm sewers and repaint streets. Now, when this happens, streets are closed. When streets are closed, you can't get out of your driveway. When you can't get out of your driveway, you park on adjacent streets. If you park on adjacent streets overnight, you get a ticket. If by some chance you forget that there is a city ordinance for overnight parking, your car gets impounded. Now, this game of helter-skelter played with cars is entirely unnecessary. It's also grievous. Some of us are decrepit. Some of us are old. Some of us are old and decrepit. Now, I am sure that Officer 7540 has better things to do than to babysit cars which are trying to escape your construction projects. There is a simple solution, which is nevertheless sufficient. Simply suspend the overnight parking ordinance within 1,000 feet of any street that's closed for construction. It's up to you, of course, but you might cut us a little slack. Now, if you have no questions, I'm going to go rescue my car from your parking meters.
Danny Dugan. Danny Dugan. Okay. Seeing no one. Which, who, what's your name?
I'm Danny.
Danny, okay, come up.
Hello.
Say your name and ward or address.
Okay, my name is Danny Dugan. I am a new resident in Ward 1 with Mr. Chris Coleman. I'm also a candidate on the Iowa GOP ticket for Iowa House District 34. I was going to come in here and shout, "Shame on you," but then when they let me in to speak, everyone was screaming it behind me, so I'm not sure if I need to keep repeating it. It seems like you've been beat up enough, but I would like to say this: definitely shame on you. And I will say, as a state representative, and I'm running for office, I'm spending $2,000 of my own money and two months to do it, and I will have more power if the constituents of Iowa House District elect me to the state than all of you combined. And if they do it, my foot will be on your neck, Chris. I am, I am disgusted. As a former property manager who worked in low-income housing for almost a decade, Mr. Joe Gatto was public enemy number one to all the litex indicators and developers, and you know what? Looking back now, it's a scam. They make so much money off of this, and it's deplorable, and we're putting up $8 million buildings for 44 units on the corner of Sixth Avenue and University for foster-aged kids? They get Section 8 aging out of foster care. Why would we want to put them right there? You need to use some common sense, and actually, you need to do some more fiscally responsible things because you've spent millions and millions in dollars to buy your seats on this, and I'm spending $2,000. You, Josh, and you, Mike. You, Josh, and you, Mike, alone are over $500,000 to purchase your seats, and you did it in under seven weeks. You could have housed 50 homeless veterans for a year. Literally. And I appreciate your vote no for this, but we shouldn't even have gotten here. I am disappointed in you, Connie. Joe, no offense, I expected it. It's all right. But for Linda, and everyone else who voted yes for this, guess what? I'm a resident of Des Moines now. I'm no longer an angry right lady from Ankeny. You will not have your seats next time you run. And if it's the last thing I do, you're going to die. Vote for Danny. Thanks. Have a great day.
With that, Madam Mayor, I'll move to receiving file ADA through T.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded.
Voice vote.
All in favor? The other one, the motion carried, right?
Yep.
Okay. Mm-hmm.